Come on, folks, we're about ready to start here. We need to clear the floor, please. We need to clear the floor, please. Clear the main floor of the chambers.
That's okay? Okay, great. So Cabrera and Lander. Go into your bag rooms?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all cell phones, all cell phones, to vibrate. All electronic devices to vibrate. At this time, will all non-council employees, non-council employees, please leave the main floor of the chambers? Thank you. Majority Leader, it's all yours.
Good afternoon. I am Majority Leader Lori Combo. I am now reopening the recessed meeting of June 7th, being held today on June 28th, 2018. If you all could please be seated, we are now going to begin roll call.
Adams.
Present.
Ampree Samuel.
Present.
Ayala.
Present.
Barron. Borelli.
Brannon.
Here.
Cabrera.
Here.
Chin.
Here.
Cohen. Constantinides.
Present.
Carnegie.
Present.
Deutsch.
Present.
Diaz. Drum.
Present.
Espinal. Eugene. Gibson.
Sorry. I'm here.
Thank you. Jonai. Gordenchik. Holden.
Here.
Kalos. King. Ku. Kozlitz. Lanceman. Lander. Levin. Levine.
Here.
Mizel. Mizel. Menschaka.
Presente.
Miller. Moya. Perkins. Powers.
Here.
Reynoso. Richards.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rose.
Present.
Rosenthal. Salamanca.
Present.
Torres. Traeger.
Here.
Ulrich.
Present.
Balone. Moya.
Present.
Van Bramer. Williams. Jaeger.
Here.
Mattio. Combo.
Present.
Speaker Johnson.
Thank you. I am now adjourning the recessed meeting of June 7th. We will now open the stated meeting of June 28th, 2018. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Adams.
Present.
Ampree Samuel.
Present.
Ayala.
Present.
Barron.
Present.
Borelli. Brannon. Cabrera. Chin.
Here.
Cohen. Constantinides.
Here.
Carnegie. Deutsch. Diaz. Drum.
Yes.
Espinal. Eugene. Gibson. Jonai. Gordenchik.
I'm still here.
Holden. Kalos. King. Ku. Kozlitz. Lanceman. Lander. Levin. Levine.
Here.
Jonai. Mizel. Menschaka.
Presente.
Miller. Moya. Perkins. Powers.
Here.
Reynoso. Richards.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rose.
Here.
Rosenthal. Salamanca.
Present.
Torres. Traeger.
Here.
Ulrich.
Here.
Balone. Van Bramer.
Here.
Williams. Thank you. Jaeger. Mattio. Combo.
Present.
Speaker Johnson.
I'm here.
We have a quorum. We will now have today's invocation delivered by Jeff Wells, lead pastor, Church of the Village, located at 201 West 13th Street in Manhattan. Welcome, and can we all please rise?
Good afternoon. Let us enter together into a time of reflection. Creating and sustaining God, open our hearts and minds and spirits to Your loving, forgiving, and compassionate presence. Even though we go through our days frequently ignoring Your movements, You invest Yourself in every moment of our lives and continually offer us guidance, forgiveness, and a loving spirit. And so we offer our deep gratitude today for all of the ways that You offer us unconditional love and amazing grace, all of those ways that we perceive and the ones that we fail to notice. We are thankful today to live in this amazing city. We are proud to live together in a place of such beautiful and incredible diversity that attracts people from around this nation and from around the world who seek to offer their gifts and also to grow and to benefit by living together in this place. We are also privileged to be in a city that was the birthplace of pride, a city in which millions of people come out every year to celebrate and affirm our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer siblings. And yet, we also know that we have much work to do to create a just city in which everyone can thrive and feel safe. In the midst of this wonderful diversity, we still have segregated neighborhoods and schools, and in a city with $3 trillion in wealth, we have terrible and growing economic disparity, poverty, and homelessness. And so, God of love and justice, we lift up the members of this body who all bring a passion and experience and skills to this important work. They all desire to do no harm and to do all the good they can and remain connected to You and to all of our human family in their spirits. And so, loving One, we ask You to guide their deliberations, their discernment, and their decision-making. Help all of us to remember that each one of us is Your beloved child and an amazing expression of Your boundless, creative love. And in all that we do today and beyond, may our actions always contribute to bringing justice, well-being, and peace to our city and to all who choose to live here. Amen.
Thank you for your timely and inspirational prayer. Speaker Corey Johnson will now... I motion to spread the invocation in full upon the record by Speaker Corey Johnson.
I make that motion, Madam Majority Leader, that the invocation by Pastor Jeff Wells be spread full and upon the record.
Thank you. We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Barron.
I move that the minutes of the stated meeting of May 9th, 2018, be adopted as printed.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron. We will now have messages and papers from the mayor.
Excuse me. M-65, City Debt and Reserves.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed?
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
M-66 to M-69, Charter Revision Commission Appointees.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed?
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M-70 through M-76, various applications.
Coupled on a call-up vote at this time, I will ask for a roll call vote on all of today's land use call-ups.
Adams.
Aye on all.
Ampree Samuel.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
I vote aye.
Borelli. Brannon. Cabrera.
Permission to vote on all items and resolution, resolutions to today's general calendar?
Permission granted. Thank you.
Aye on all. Thank you so much.
Chin.
Aye on all.
Cohen. Constantinides.
Aye on all.
Carnegie.
Vote aye.
Deutsch. Diaz.
Aye on all.
Drum.
Aye.
Espinal.
Aye on all.
Eugene. Gibson.
I vote aye.
Jonai.
Aye on all.
Gordenchik.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye on all.
Kalos. King. Ku. Kozlitz. Lanceman.
Aye.
Lander.
Vote aye on all land use call-ups and request permission to vote aye on all items on today's general order calendar?
Permission granted.
I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Levin.
Aye on all.
Levine.
Aye on all.
Mizel. Menschaka.
Aye on all.
Moya.
Aye on all.
Perkins. Powers.
Aye on all.
Reynoso.
Aye on all.
Richards.
Aye on all.
Rivera.
Aye on all.
Rodriguez. Rose.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Torres. Traeger.
Aye.
Ulrich.
Aye.
Balone.
With permission, I'd like to vote on all items on today's calendar?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I vote aye on all.
Van Bramer.
Aye on all.
Williams. Jaeger.
Aye.
Mattio. Combo.
Aye.
Speaker Johnson.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative and zero in the negative. And now, we will have communication from Speaker Corey Johnson.
I thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Good afternoon. First, I want to thank Pastor Jeff Wells for delivering the invocation today. Pastor Wells leads the Church of the Village in my district, and I am fortunate that they call District 3 home. Pastor Wells and the Church of the Village have long fought for social justice and advocated for New Yorkers who need it most. I thank Pastor Wells for being here and for all he does for my district and for the city. Councilmember Drum and I were in the Church of the Village not that long ago for the commemoration of the founding of PFLAG, Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, which was founded in that church by Jean Manford. And so Pastor Wells carries on a great tradition of social justice from the Church of the Village, and I'm really grateful for everything that he's done. Before we begin with today's agenda, I'd like to take the time to honor someone who we're holding in our hearts this week, Lassandro Junior Guzman Feliz. New Yorkers everywhere are still in shock and mourning this young man who had a very bright future. Junior was a member of the NYPD explorers and dreamed of becoming a police officer. I attended Junior's wake, and I met his parents. As painful as it was to be there and see Junior's heartbroken parents, it was amazing to see the community come out and support his family and friends. Our thoughts and prayers are with them during this extremely difficult time, and we thank the NYPD for working hard to swiftly bring justice for Junior. I would also like to honor Chief of Fire Prevention Ronald R. Spatafora, a 40-year veteran of the New York City Fire Department who succumbed to World Trade Center-related cancer. He supervised the rescue and recovery efforts at the World Trade Center site as a deputy chief and became the World Trade Center Chief of Safety for the entire recovery operation. Chief Spatafora, who is 63 years old, is the 178th member of the FDNY to die of World Trade Center-related illnesses. If folks could rise so we could have a moment of silence for these individuals. Thank you. We're going to jump into our docket for today. The council's going to vote on the following land use items. 45 Broad Street subway improvement. The council's approving a special permit to make important transit improvements to the Broad Street JZ station and the Wall Street 45 station to facilitate the development of a mixed-use skyscraper in Councilmember Chin's district, which will provide ADA access to the station that currently doesn't have it. Block 675 is in my district. The council's approving two applications which are part of the block 675 redevelopment. 601 West 29th Street submitted by Douglas and Development and 606 West 30th Street submitted by La Lysarian Properties. Together, both applications propose to contribute a total amount of $52 million for the completion of the Hudson River Park improvements in exchange for transferring unused development rights from piers 59, 60, and 61 to facilitate the redevelopment of portions of block 675. It will create over 300 units of affordable housing at no cost to the city of New York. The council's modifications include reducing the maximum tower height of the Douglas and Development Tower to 591 feet, securing $4 million in additional funding to facilitate the completion of the park improvements between West 32nd and West 34 Streets, and designating open space funds to Chelsea Park and New York City Park in the neighborhood. The council also negotiated an agreement for the acquisition of some space for the FDNY to provide a much-needed EMS facility on 29th Street. I want to thank the folks that are here who have worked on this. My staff has spent a long time on this. I want to thank Eric Botcher and Louis Tolden-Brown and Raju Man and Matt Green from my staff. We've spent over four years on this project, and I'm very excited. We have a bunch of other developments we're voting on today. I'm not going to read all of it. We are voting on an application in Councilmember Combo's district, 14250 South Portland Avenue, and we're going to have an MIH Option 1 in that development. 180 Avenue of the Americas in Councilmembers in my district. It's a commercial overlay. 1568 Broadway text amendment. It's for the Times Square Hotel. It has to do with signage requirements. It's in the theater sub-district core. That's in Councilmember Powers's district. 85 Mercer Street, it's an application giving a waiver to allow retail uses. That's in Councilmember Chin's district. The council's also approving seven individual landmarks. 95 Madison Avenue in Councilmember Carlini Rivera's district. Hotel Seville in Councilmember Keith Powers's district. PS 109 in Councilmember Diana Ayala's district. Benjamin Franklin High School in Councilmember Diana Ayala's district. Richard Webber Harlem Packing House in Councilmember Diana Ayala's district. Dr. Maurice T. Lewis House in Councilmember Carlos Menschaka's district. The Dime Savings Bank of Williamsburg in Councilmember Reynoso's district. East Village 1, which is an Article 11 40-year partial tax exemption, and that is in Councilmember Carlini Rivera's district, as well as East Village 2, the same thing, in Councilmember Carlini Rivera's district. And La Cabana, the council will vote to approve an application for three related actions in order to facilitate new mixed-income development at La Cabana Properties in South Williamsburg, on the south side of Williamsburg, which I believe is in Councilmember Reynoso's district. Next in the agenda, the council will vote on the following legislation. First, we will vote to co-name 95 thoroughfares in public places based on requests of council members whose districts include the location. Of these 95 co-names, seven are either a relocation or previously enacted co-naming or a revision to the street sign installed with respect to previously enacted co-naming. There are too many councilmembers-to-names sponsoring the legislation, but we thank all of them. I want to thank the staff who worked on this, Patrick Mulvahill and Chris Sartori. Next, we'll vote on a number of bills aiming to enforce a cleaner city, four of which are sponsored by Minority Leader Stephen Mattio. Introduction 851 would mandate the Department of Sanitation to create a plan for increasing enforcement against littering from vehicles in areas where such littering has been shown to be an issue. Introduction 655A would enhance the Department of Sanitation's ability to enforce prohibitions on unauthorized dumping by allowing it to use identifying information found among unlawfully dumped material as evidence of the identity of the person doing the dumping. Introduction 850A would increase civil penalties for littering from a vehicle. And Introduction 203B would raise the penalties for public littering for the second violation and the third violation within a 12-month period. The bill would not change the penalty for a first violation. That remains at $75. Introduction 636A, sponsored by Councilmember Denique Miller, would raise civil penalties and criminal fines for unlawful commercial dumping. I want to thank the staff who worked on this package of bills, Nicola Ben, Nadia Johnson, and Jonathan Seltzer. Finally, the council is voting on several bills making affordable housing fair for all New Yorkers. I am proud to sponsor two of these bills. Introduction 601A would require the city to report annually on the implementation of Affordable Housing Plan with specificity, including the number of units targeted to be created or preserved each year and the number of units that are actually created or preserved in the preceding year in each neighborhood tabulation area. This legislation would also require the city to provide a summary of the current demand for affordable housing and a description of obstacles to fulfilling that demand. Introduction 772A, 722A, would require the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to create a system to track the expiration dates for all department regulatory agreements. HPD would also be required to report on the status of implementing such tracking system and, once the tracking system is in place, the expiration dates of regulatory agreements and preservation efforts. Councilmember Donovan Richards has a bill today, Introduction 607A, which would require the city to include measures to affirmatively further fair housing in its report on the creation or preservation of affordable housing. I want to thank the staff who worked on these bills, Megan Chen, Jose Conde, and Sarah Gastelum. Resolution 0423, sponsored by Councilmembers Williams and Majority Leader Combo, we will vote on a resolution sponsored by Councilmembers Williams and Combo. This resolution will recognize the tremendous contributions that New Yorkers of Haitian ancestry have made to our city and nation. It would ceremonially designate an area of Flatbush in Brooklyn as Little Haiti. I want to thank the staff, Chris Sartori and Patrick Mulvahill, who worked on that. I want to congratulate all the members who are passing bills. This concludes our agenda for today's stated. I want to wish everyone a happy summer, and I look forward to proceeding with today's votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker Johnson. Now, we will move into the discussion of general orders, and we will begin with Councilmember Chaim Deutsch.
Thank you. So today, I'm introducing, I actually had this for street renaming in my district that we will be voting on today, but I would just like to single out one. That is for Police Officer Leon Foxway. It was a typical day of work for Police Officer Leon Fox, a 10-year veteran of the NYPD. He was assigned to the 60th Police precinct, and he was escorting a movie theater manager to the bank to deposit his daily earnings. As Officer Fox and the manager approached the bank entrance, he was approached by three men. The men grabbed the suitcase of cash and fled on foot. Officer Fox went in pursuit, and one of the criminals turned around and shot him, where he died at the scene at the corner of West 12th Street and Surf Avenue. At that point, I was approached by a police officer in the 60th precinct, asking to see if we could do a street renaming, where I agreed. Trying to contact any family, I finally contacted the pension board of the NYPD, where I was able to locate a son in California. I called up the son in California and explained to him what a council member is and explained to him what a street renaming is, and he sobbed. The son is 84 years old. He was seven years old when his dad was shot and killed at the corner of Surf Avenue and West 12th Street. So I just want to say that this happened in 1941, 77 years ago. Officer Leon Fox has been largely forgotten by the history books. Today, we're voting to rename the street corner where he lost his life. Surf Avenue and West 12th Street will stand as memorial to Officer Fox and his sacrifice to protect the people of this city. And I'm proud, and I'm asking all my colleagues to join me in voting for this crucial street renaming to remember the memory of one of New York's finest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Deutsch, for keeping Officer Fox's memory alive. We will now hear from Minority Leader Mattio.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I think we could all agree that litter is a consistent problem throughout this city. That is why during my first budget as councilmember in fiscal year 15, I supported a new initiative along with many of my colleagues called the New York City Cleanup. I think most of us would agree that this has been a very successful initiative, judged by the widespread support and the fact that funding for it has increased each fiscal year since. With those funds, we on Staten Island have created a dedicated Staten Island clean team that has cleaned nearly 1,200 locations across the borough, removing weeds and graffiti and collecting 7,000 contractor bags of trash and literally tons of debris. For me, there are two major takeaways from this experience. One, the overwhelming positive response from constituents confirmed what I already knew, that people desperately want to keep their communities clean. This is a top quality of life issue for them. And two, the New York City Cleanup Initiative is not enough. We clean it up, people litter. We clean it again, people litter more. Drivers toss garbage out of their car windows. Despite all the efforts, the problems still persist. We need to do more. That is the impetus behind the bills I introduce in this comprehensive legislative package to combat littering and illegal dumping. Intro 851 will help us create better enforcement strategies to tackle littering hotspots, specifically locations where people dump from their vehicles. Intro 203 will increase fines to deter persistent litter offenders. Intro 850 specifically addresses those who toss garbage from their cars. Intro 655 will provide sanitation with the tools to really tackle legal dumping by establishing a rebuttable presumption that the person or company whose name is on the vehicle that transported an illegal dump material is responsible. Keeping our communities clean is not just about appearances or the pride we all feel when our streets are not strewn with garbage. There are obvious environmental benefits and real financial benefits to a clean city because we know people do not want to live to shop and to work in a city that is strewn with garbage. I want to thank Sanitation Committee Chair Antonio Reynoso for his strong support to the speaker, Jeff Baker, Laura Popper, Nicola Bean, Nadia Johnson, Jonathan Seltzer, and from my staff, Peter Spencer, David Carr, and Angela Hassan, and I look forward to voting on these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. Good afternoon, colleagues. Today, I'm proud to sponsor legislation to co-name East 118th Street and Park Avenue as firefighter William E. Woodland Place. Mr. Woodland was one of 12 African-Americans in his class when he joined the Mr. Woodland was one of twelve African-Americans in his class when he joined the fire department in January of nineteen eighty-two. He was assigned to Engine Thirty-nine on the Upper East Side until nineteen ninety-six, and later transferred to Engine Twenty-one in Murray Hill, where he remained until his retirement in two thousand and two. He was known as the mayor of his block as he organized annual block parties, an event that his family continues to host to honor his legacy. On September eleventh, after seeing smoke travel into his neighborhood, Mr. Woodland rode his daughter's bike from East Harlem to the World Trade Center to help with rescue efforts. On August twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, Mr. Woodland passed from nine eleven-related causes. According to his family, he was a boisterous, trailblazing person who never lost hope. I am proud to honor such a brave person today, and I thank you all for joining me in doing so. Additionally, I am thrilled to co-sponsor legislation to co-name 111th Street and Fifth Avenue as 111th Street Old Timers Way. The 111th Street Old Timers Organization has coordinated the longest-running block party in East Harlem, which brings together thousands of visitors each year in celebration of community, culture, and tradition. The largest attraction of the block party is the stickball game, a beloved staple of the community. The organization also engages in community efforts, such as mentoring formerly incarcerated youth, sustaining cultural institutions, and supporting local artisans and businesses. The 111th Street Old Timers are a bedrock in our community, and I am proud to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ayala. We will now hear from Councilmember Gordencek.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I wanted to speak today about the young people at Martin Van Buren High School. We don't hear many wonderful stories coming out of the New York City Public Education System, but of course, there are countless wonderful stories. And my last event before I came to the stated today was their graduation. Six years ago, when Mr. Sam Soche took over that school, it's a renewal school, the graduation rate was forty-five percent. And today, I'm happy to report that the preliminary graduation rate, the two-hundred-and-fifty-some-odd children that graduated today, young people, is now seventy-six percent. It's a testament to these young people and to their educators. Most of those children do not reside in my district. They come from very far away, and many of them have to get up before six in the morning to travel to Eastern Queens. But I want to know this, I wanted to make sure that their story is on the record of the city council, and I want to congratulate each and every one of them, the educators, their families, and everybody who works so hard. I also did want to note that I was happy to preside over the Parks Committee meeting this week, where we passed pre-considered Intro 988 out of committee. There are a lot of famous people being honored today by this council, and when the mayor signs that legislation, where we make these thoroughfares, some true all-time greats, like the greatest of all time, Muhammad Ali, and Ruby Dee and A.C. Davis. And we had New York Times Magazine reporter come to talk to us about Ida B. Wells and the great work that she did, reporting on lynchings in the deep south, in the not-so-deep south. We're also honoring two people, that Mary Audrey Gallagher and Andy Pops King, who had something to do with making councilmembers as well, not only doing great things. So I'm delighted to have passed this bill, and I thank you for listening to me today, my colleagues.
Thank you. And we are now going to hear from Councilmember Rodriguez, but I just want to remind our colleagues, we are now just focused on the legislation that we are voting upon, as well for many are discussing street co-namings as well. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Today, I'm proud to bring important co-names to northern Manhattan to New York City. I want to highlight a special one for me, the one after Bishop Anolfo Romero, a Catholic leader and a human rights leader who was assassinating El Salvador. El Obispo Romero was a champion of the poor, who became a human rights icon in Latin American when he was killed by a right-wing death squad in nineteen eighty. Hoy estamos poniendo el nombre a la calle in Washington Heights, en el 179º de Washington, con el nombre de El Obispo Romero, un símbolo de una persona que se dedicó a defender a los pobres, a defender los derechos humanos en América Latina y en todo el mundo. Today, we co-naming 179 for Washington. In front of where we have the gray undocumented woman Amanda, who came from Guatemala and is living in the Santorius Church, yes, in front of where we co-naming that intersection after this gray human rights leader, Bishop Anolfo Romero. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Councilmember King.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I just wanted to just say thank you today to everyone as we're voting on our street renaming's. I have two that's going to be voting on today. One is Sandy E. Gresham Way, the president, wife of eleven ninety-nine, George Gresham's wife. But also, a very special one for me today is the young man who created me, my father, Andy Pops King Jr., for the work he's done to save about ten thousand young men's lives growing up, who became doctors, lawyers, judges, administrators, and as my great friend Gordenja just said, elected officials as well as creating me. So I just want to put on the record, thanks, Pops, we love you, and the North Bronx and the Bronx and our young men are a greater place with you being in all our lives. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Councilmember Richards.
Thank you. Earliest year the Fair Housing Act turned fifty years old, and it's clear that we still have a lot of work to do to ensure everyone has an opportunity to find a safe and affordable place to live, especially with the Trump administration showing little to no faith that they will continue to follow this law. Surgregated communities create vast disparities in resources, healthcare, education, and opportunity. It prevents bright students from attaining their full potential. It keeps the unemployed and underemployed struggling to make ends meet. It's the prime reason high-poverty neighborhoods exist in this city. As we work to desegregate our education system, addressing racial disparities in housing, will have a direct impact on creating more diverse communities. While our trains, buses, and workplaces are the most diverse in the world, our schools, homes, and neighborhoods are the most divided. By creating a comprehensive plan to address historic patterns of segregation, we can finally begin to address all of the systematic factors that have led to a lack of resources for schools, jobs, and public amenities in communities of color across the city. Every child should get to experience the beauty and uniqueness of the hundreds of different cultures spread out across the five boroughs, and learn the importance of valuing different races and ethnicities firsthand. Your zip code shouldn't be a detriment to opportunity. I would like to thank the Speaker and Councilmember Lander, our Legislative Division, and Jordan Gibbons and Serena on my staff for their work on this bill, and I urge my colleagues to vote aye on it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Councilmember Barron.
Thank you. I wanted to just speak on some of those persons who are included in the co-namings. Frank and Doris Bell, who established Bell Funeral Home, which is, in our community, so well-known for the care and attention that they give to their clients. Ida B. Wells, who was an educator, journalist, owned, co-owned a newspaper, and she highlighted lynchings and the fact that those who were lynched were not accused of crimes, but that they were challenging white businesses and white establishments, mainly in the south, but also coming towards the north. And she did that in the face of being black and being a woman at a time when both of those were impediments to achieving your goals. The New York Vens Court, the New York Vens was the first black professional basketball team. They're not well-known, but if you check your history, you'll find out about their great accomplishments, particularly talking about, as we gave acknowledgement today, to Haiti, the fact that Jean Jacques Dessalines was the first president of Haiti, and to Saint Laurent, led the rebellion in Haiti that was successful, that forced the United States, that gave the United States an opportunity to acquire what we thought of as Louisiana Purchase from the French, and had a great contribution to making a significant impact during that war. And finally, Muhammad Ali. Oh, A.C. and Ruby Davis, who were not just actors, but were activists. They defended Paul Robeson at a time when he was a target of this government. They defended so many others. They participated in the protests that took place at One Police Plaza that were organized by my husband and Reverend Daughtry. And finally, Muhammad Ali, because this is a person who put his professional future on the line. He sacrificed it. He was willing to give up his career. He gave it up, not knowing what the outcome would be, but knowing that the cause that he was fighting for and the position that he had taken was a just one. So I want to commend all of those who presented these names for co-namings. Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, my colleague, King, Andy King, his father as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron. We'll now hear from Councilmember Powers.
Thank you, and thank you. Share many of the feelings and beliefs of those who just spoke. I wanted to welcome today into the chamber the son of Jimmy Breslin, a legend here in New York City, to be here for the renaming of Forty-second Street and Second Avenue in my district, Jimmy Breslin Way. Just last year, we lost a legend in New York City, somebody who wrote about this city, including this body, with passion and fervor that we have not seen in a very long time. And my predecessor, Councilmember Garradnik, along with the mayor, did a temporary street renaming in his honor, where the former Daily News building was. And today, we get to make that permanent and honor somebody who contributed to this city and the fabric of this city, and somebody who reminds us the importance of media at a time where it is being undermined every single day. So first of all, I want to welcome the Breslin family for being here today, and certainly I look forward to putting that sign up in my district. I also wanted to welcome those here with the Rudin family to join Jack Rudin's name, along with Lou Rudin in my district as well, to honor those who have contributed so much to our city as well. And finally, just two more I want to acknowledge. A slain FBI agent, I think, I believe it's in Councilmember Combo's office, Edwin Woodruff. I have constituents, FBI members, who actually reached out to me about this, feeling passionately to have this street renamed, and I know that they're watching today as well, and are honored to have that's renamed. And finally, to both Councilmember King and to Councilmember Drum, I know this is also a special day, to be honoring people so special to you, who I know we wish could be here today to see that. So congratulations. And of course, the greatest fighter who said he refused to fight, Muhammad Ali. It is always an honor to be honoring such a great legend in this city. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Powers, and we will now finally hear from Councilmember Steve Levin.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader. Today, we are voting, as my colleagues have said, on the street co-naming of civil rights leader Ida B. Wells. Ida B. Wells needs no introduction. Her work as a journalist, abolitionist, suffragist, civil rights leader, shining a bright light on lynching throughout our country, especially in the south, has left an indelible legacy on our fight for equality and racial justice. And her muckraking and investigative work has trod a path for journalists to this day. In this political moment, when the notion of a free press is being actively undermined, demonized, and attacked by our president, our responsibility to honor the legacy of leaders like Ida B. Wells is more urgent than ever. Yet while her legacy is often well-known, her time spent in Brooklyn is much less so. It was here that she gave talks and inspired the beginning of the NAACP's Women's Club Movement, focusing on the need to address the intersections of race and gender in civil rights. Ms. Wells was ahead of her time, and so it is long overdue that we grant her family this honor today. I want to acknowledge and thank her great-granddaughter, Michelle Duster, who is leading the campaign to build a monument in their home city of Chicago, along with journalist Nicole Hannah Jones, local historian Jacob Morris, and Brooklyn Community Board Two for their support in co-naming Gold Street between Myrtle and Willoughby Streets in Brooklyn, Ida B. Wells' place. There's much more we need to do to honor the contribution of visionary women in history. In fact, less than ten percent of monuments nationwide utter women. I am proud to be part of this effort today to help change that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to applaud all of my colleagues for the groundbreaking street co-namings that are going to immortalize the history and herstory of so many New Yorkers and those around the country that have made this country a great place. We are now going to have report of special committees?
None.
We are now going to have reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Intros 601A, 607A, and 722A, Affordable Housing. Amended and coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU eighty-nine through LU ninety-four, Special Hudson River Park District.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Rule 11.7B of the Rules of the Council and Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
Excuse me, LU one oh seven and Reso four twenty-four, Sidewalk Cafe.
Coupled on general orders?
LU's one oh eight and one oh nine, Special Downtown Brooklyn District.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Rule 11.7B of the Rules of the Council and Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
LU, excuse me, LU one ten and Reso four twenty-five through LU one thirteen and Reso four twenty-eight, tax exemptions and zoning amendments.
Coupled on general orders?
LU one fourteen and Reso four twenty-nine through LU one twenty-one and Reso four thirty-six, sidewalk cafe and landmark designations.
Coupled on general orders?
Pre-considered LU one twenty-six and Reso four thirty-seven through pre-considered LU one thirty-one and Reso four forty-two, East Village.
Coupled on general orders?
Pre-considered LU one thirty-two and Reso four forty-three through pre-considered LU one thirty-four and Reso four forty-five, La Cabana, Brooklyn.
Coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, pre-considered Intro 988, naming of ninety-five thoroughfares and public places.
Coupled on general orders?
Report of the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, intros 203B, 655A, 656A, 850A, and 851, littering and unlawful dumping.
Coupled on general orders?
On the general order calendar, intro 720, Site Safety Training.
Laid over.
LU eighty-four and Reso four forty-six through LU one oh nine and Reso four fifty-four, various applications.
Coupled on general orders?
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, and at this time, I would ask for a roll call vote, roll call vote on all items on today's general order calendar.
Lanceman.
Aye.
Adams.
Aye.
Emprie Samuel.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I'm voting aye on all, with the exception of eighty-four, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, and ninety-four, and the accompanying resolutions. As you may know, I'm always looking at the percentage of housing that we are providing that is so-called affordable. And part of what I've noticed is the affordability does not match what matches the percentages of people who live in New York City at those income bands. So for those reasons, I'm voting no on those, and aye on all the others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brannan.
Aye.
Chin.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Konstantinidis.
Aye.
Carnegie.
Aye.
Deutsch.
Aye.
Diaz.
Aye.
Drum.
Aye.
Espinal.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I just want to highlight that I am joined by a very bright constituent of mine, Julio Pagan, who will be voting in my favor.
Aye.
I'll just need you to also vote aye on all, Councilmember Espinal.
Aye.
Thank you.
Eugene.
Aye.
Gibson.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon to all of our colleagues. I, too, want to join in supporting today's agenda that includes a number of streets to be renamed and co-named after prominent members of our community. And in addition to Ida B. Wells and Muhammad Ali and Sandra Gresham and Andy Pops King Jr., as well as the mother of our finance chair, Councilmember Drum, I certainly want to acknowledge two fallen NYPD detectives that we are going to be co-naming streets after in the borough of the Bronx. NYPD Detective Joseph Lem, who was killed in the line of duty in Afghanistan, as well as NYPD Detective Mio Sotis Familia, who was a detective in the forty-sixth precinct where I live in the borough of the Bronx. And we're going to recognize the one-year anniversary of her tragic passing, July fifth. Two members of service who served us well, and certainly many of the members of service that we're honoring and renaming streets after, both NYPD and FDNY, certainly want to recognize that. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Williams and Majority Leader Combo in recognizing the incredible contributions of the Haitian-American community. While I may be from Trinidad, I certainly honorary consider myself a member of the community as well, and want to thank you for the resolution in recognizing Little Haiti. And I also want to congratulate our Speaker and Councilmember Richards and others who are passing a very important package related to affordable housing, and certainly looking at a lot of the trends that many of our communities have experienced when you talk about segregation and not making sure that affordable housing is truly affordable and available to every New Yorker. I look forward to today's vote, and certainly... are passing a very important package related to affordable housing, and certainly looking at a lot of the trends that many of our communities have experienced when you talk about segregation and not making sure that affordable housing is truly affordable and available to every New Yorker. I look forward to today's vote and certainly all the work that lies ahead. And with that, I vote aye on all. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson.
Jonai?
Aye or no?
Gordenchik?
Permission to briefly explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I just want to remember also that we are naming two thoroughfares in my district after houses of worship, one after the Amadiya Muslim community at McLaughlin and the Grand Central Parkway Armenia Way, which is just above the LIE and Bayside Hills, and after our fallen heroes and all those who died on nine eleven, Bayside Hills Memorial Way, where each and every year, hundreds of people turn out to commemorate those who've fallen. With that, I vote aye on all, Madam Majority Leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holden?
Aye or no?
King?
Aye or no?
Kozlowitz?
In honor of Audrey Galligan, I vote aye on all.
Levin?
Aye or no? And congratulations to Councilmembers King and Drum on these very meaningful street co-names as well. Thank you.
Levine?
Aye or no?
Mizell?
Yes.
Manchaca?
Aye or no?
Moya?
Aye or no?
Perkins?
Aye or no?
Powers?
Aye or no?
Reynoso?
Permission to explain my vote? With congratulations to Councilmember Mario and Little Haiti, I vote aye on all.
Richards?
Vote aye or no?
Rivera?
Aye or no?
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Aye or no?
Torres?
Aye or no?
Trager?
Rosenthal? Thank you. Aye on all.
Van Bramer? Williams?
May I be excused for my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I'm going to be voting aye on all, but I do want to align myself with Councilmembers Barron's comments on housing. I'm voting aye because I have a history of just supporting those who choose option one. But my hope is that this body, we look at MIH, we know now that it was not what it was supposed to be. I think we failed in our duties as we move forward. We should relook at that because most of the zones that come through this, through here, we know can use some additional affordability. So I'm glad it does have MIH option one, which is the only option I will support, but we do need to relook at this. Thank you, Councilmember Barron, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Van Bramer?
I vote aye.
Jaeger?
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam President. I am voting aye on all, and I'd like to give a specific mention to the package of legislation that we're voting on with regard to dumping and littering and trash management, and particular congratulations to Mr. Minority Leader and Councilmember Miller. I am cosponsoring two of these bills along with them, and the reason that I'm doing this is, you know, I didn't come here to seek to raise fines on people of New York, and none of my colleagues did, but this is, has truly become a scourge on our neighborhoods as we go through our neighborhoods and we see the illegal dumping, particularly the kind of dumping that Introduction 656A seeks to address, which is regard to illegal dumping for commercial activities. It is simply a scourge on the neighborhoods that we represent. People are doing this, they are truly bad actors. And with regard to the neighborhood wastebaskets, they are personal gripe of mine. I have been on, I was on a community board before I came here for eighteen years. We fight to keep our neighborhoods clean, we try to get the extra sanitation pickups, and the one thing that we always hear back from sanitation is that no matter how much they go and clean up these street baskets-
Quiet in the chambers?
...that we put out there, people simply put their household trash alongside. And it was constantly a frustrating experience that sanitation could not write summonses to people who, unless they actually saw them put the trash alongside the wastebasket. This package of legislation addresses that. These are good bills, and again, Mr. Minority Leader and Councilmember Miller, thank you very much for your leadership on this. I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Ulrich?
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I just want to add my thanks to the council, my colleagues for approving the street renaming bills. There's several, well, all of them are truly deserving and notable in their own right, but I just want to mention just a handful of them. In my district, we are honoring Maria Thompson, a longtime civic leader in Woodhaven, who really dedicated her life to the betterment of her community. We're really looking forward to that and keeping her memory and her service alive and well, and we want to honor her in a special way. There's, I noticed that we're also naming a street after Sri Prakash Gosai, who was a pundit in the local Hindu mandir in Ozone Park. He founded it on One Hundred First Avenue, and he was a great man. And also, of course, the late, great Jimmy Breslin. I know it's in Councilmember Powers' district, but his son is here with us today, Kevin Breslin. He lives in the Rockaways, and Jimmy really changed the face of the city and contributed to, you know, good government in enormous way through his articles and the newspapers. And, you know, he is certainly deserving of this honor. And all the people that are being mentioned, you know, they're with the Lord now, but we want to keep their names out there and honor them in a special way. So I want to vote aye on all and say thank you to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario? Combo?
I vote aye.
Speaker Johnson?
I vote aye.
All items on today's general order calendar were adopted by a vote of forty-seven the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of LU's eighty-four, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four with accompanying resos, which was adopted by a vote of forty-six in the affirmative, one negative, and zero abstentions. We will now have the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on the agenda.
Now we will have the discussion of resolutions, starting with Councilmember Jamani Williams.
Thank you. This is on resolutions, correct? Yes, resolution. Thank you very much. Today, we're going to be passing a resolution to concretize Little Haiti as a resolution in the city, so I want to thank the Majority Leader, Councilmember Mark Trader, Councilmember Espinal, and of course, the Speaker for all the work that they've done to help get us here, and of course, recognize the first Haitian-born elected official, Councilmember Matthew Eugene, that we have in our body here. I'm sorry, the first Haitian-born city council member, Matthew Eugene, who we have right here in this body. It is with great pride, as I myself and Councilmember Eugene represent the largest grouping of Haitians and Haitian-Americans outside of Haiti and Florida, to have the body designate this area in my district. As I mentioned, when we did the proclamation, it is a lot of source of pride because when many of us were younger, unfortunately, like the President calling this country assholes, there were many folks that tried to make people ashamed of two black cultures in particular. I forgot I had two minutes, let me close up. But Haitians and Africans were some of them. As a black man, I'm always proud because I'm free, because of the actions of Toussaint Louverture, who are also doing the street renaming for today, and Jean-Jacques Dusseling, who will be doing later. And as an American, doubling the size of Haiti. So I'm so proud of America. I'm so proud that we're able to provide this, and the Haitian culture should be celebrated from here and abroad. With that, I'll pause and just say, hopefully I can get the support of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams, and it's been an honor to work with you on this important resolution. Pre-considered Resolution 423 is a resolution ceremonially designating Flatbush Avenue within the boundaries of East Sixteenth Street, Parkside Avenue, Brooklyn Avenue, Avenue H, and Church Avenue as Little Haiti. As far as pre-considered Resolution 423 goes, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. This is a most historical day for the city of New York. We will now move on to general discussions. And we will begin with Councilmember Barron.
Thank you. I had some comments that I was going to make last stated, but I'm going to change because next week, we'll be celebrating the Fourth of July. So I just wanted to share with you the speech from Frederick Douglass from 1853. What to the American slave is your Fourth of July? I answer, a day that reveals to him more than all other days in the year, the gross injustice and cruelty to which he is the constant victim. To him, your celebration is a sham. Your boasted liberty and unholy license. Your national greatness swelling vanity. Your sound of rejoicing are empty and heartless. Your denunciation of tyrant bass-fronted impudence. Your shout of liberty and equality hollow mockery. Your prayers and hymns, your sermons and thanksgivings with all your religious parade and solemnity are to him mere bombast, fraud, deception, impiety, and hypocrisy. A thin veil to cover up crimes which would disgrace a nation of savages. There is not a nation on the earth guilty of practices more shocking and bloody than are the people of the United States at this very hour. So then we know that about ten years after that, Abraham Lincoln signed the so-called Emancipation Proclamation. But what that did was it declared freedom to those who were enslaved in the Confederate states. There were four states that were still a part of the Union that had slavery, and he did not declare the slaves in those states to be free. So that was a mockery and a sham. But we do know that we celebrate Juneteenth as a day when supposedly all of those who had been enslaved were declared free. And we know following that, we got the Thirteenth Amendment, which ended slavery everywhere except as a punishment for crime, and that became the basis for what we are now experiencing as mass incarceration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron. We will now hear from Councilmember Rose.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to talk about two bills that I was going to sponsor last time, so I just want to briefly call your attention to them. Intro 982, which will establish an office of the waterfront, which would be responsible for coordinating among the various city agencies matters that relate to the waterfront, Supporting Waterfront Management Advisory Board, and implementing the New York City Comprehensive Waterfront Plan. And since the waterfront is like our sixth borough, it behooves us to not only have the Waterfront Management Advisory Board, but also to develop this comprehensive plan, and that's Intro 982. And then Reso 378 calls upon New York State Legislature to pass, and the governor to sign Critical Gun Safety Legislation, A-6640, S-7828, and A-7021, and A-7023/63. This package of bills would establish the framework for a gun safety research fund. Because as we look in horror on the continuing cascade of gun violence and mass shootings that is terrorizing our schools and communities across the country, it is critical that we work diligently to address this public health crisis. And this fund will help New York lead the way in developing ways to properly treat it. And then I sadly announce and bid farewell to my legislative aide, Lisa Thompson. She will be greatly missed. She's truly an asset to my office. She's irreplaceable, and I will truly miss the color-coded budget spreadsheets, her enthusiasm, initiative, and organizational skills. I love Lisa, and I wish her well on her new endeavors. Thank you.
Beautiful tribute. Thank you so much. Councilmember Carnegie?
I'd like to take a moment to draw your attention to two bills I'm introducing today that I believe go a long way toward making our city fairer for New Yorkers who depend on us. First, I'd like to make you all aware of 995, which I am introducing to help protect the owners of one- and two-family homes who offer extra space in their abodes on a short-term basis from enforcement of the city's illegal conversion law, Law 45 of 2012 by the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement. This also brings the city's regulation of short-term rental market on par with the state's multiple-dwelling law, which prohibits the rental of units in multiple dwellings with three or more units for less than thirty days. As someone who represents areas of the city where middle-class people of color struggle to make ends meet, I have and always will support the ability of individual homeowners to share in economic opportunities of the sharing economy as a means to combat the affordability crisis. This is precisely why I believe Intro 995 is important. At the same time, I understand we cannot turn a blind eye to the abuses of the affordable housing market where we've seen tenants get evicted and displaced by unscrupulous commercial operators who misuse online platforms such as Airbnb for their own profit. From renters in my district covering Bed-Stuy and Crown Heights, to tenants in Upper Manhattan, the Bronx, and every community in between, we need better enforcement tools to identify and stop the bad actors who are removing affordable housing and driving up rental prices for everyday New Yorkers. This is why I also support Councilmember Carolina Rivera's legislation to require online platforms to provide the city with the proper data to do its job more efficiently and thoughtfully. This bill will give us the information to separate and punish the bad actors who are hurting our neighborhoods, taking away housing, and taking with them all the profits from the local homeowners who are acting in good faith to supplement their income. Coupled with Intro 995, I'm confident we can ensure the enforcement of Intro 981 to go after the bad actors remains true to its intent. The second bill I'd like to speak to is Intro 996, which I guess I'll have to get to at another time because I'm running out of time. But I also would just like to take one second to acknowledge my friend and mentor who unfortunately killed himself yesterday, Mr. McCall, who was facing some mental health issues and was unable to deal with them. We have a mental health crisis in this city that is at epic proportions, and I'm just happy to have a Speaker and a Council that addresses that and has done so in the budget. So thank you.
I'm so sorry for your loss. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you. I would like to draw my colleagues' attention to Reso 414, a resolution that urges the federal government to reinstate two-way tolling on the Verrazano Bridge through an act of Congress. Thirty-two years ago, congressional leaders moved to remove two-way tolling on the Verrazano Bridge to ease congestion for vehicles leaving Staten Island. Unfortunately, this created unintended consequences in Lower Manhattan. Almost immediately, we began seeing a flood of truck traffic in neighborhoods like Little Italy, Tribeca, and Hudson Square. Canal Street and all of the feeder streets, north and south of it, are now overflowing with vehicles heading to the Holland Tunnel, stuck in stop-and-go traffic during rush hour. The congestion has simply moved to Lower Manhattan. This is unfair to the residents that live there, as well as workers who travel in and out from other boroughs like Staten Island. Unlike thirty years ago, tollless technology can allow vehicles to move through tolled area without stopping. By splitting the current costs of entering Staten Island in half and reinstating two-way tolling on the Verrazano Bridge with the same fee, we can ensure an equal distribution of truck traffics without increasing commuting costs or diminishing the quality of life of Staten Islander. I hope that my colleagues, particularly those living on Staten Island, will join me in this endeavor and sign on to Reso 414. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. We will now hear from Councilmember Williams, followed by Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I just wanted to call my attention to three bills. One is on a homeless shelter siting plan, the developer of citywide shelter siting plan for implementation by DHS, a green building waiver, which waives building permit fees for building renovations, products, one to two for families, that increase energy and water efficiency, and shorefront oil release notification, requiring DEP and OEM to publicly report on their websites and notify the council affected council members and affected community boards in event of any release of oil. I neglected to mention a co-naming of Flatlands Avenue in my district after firefighter William Guomly, a District 45 resident who died unfortunately due to illnesses from working at Ground Zero on nine eleven. I also want to just lift up the name of Yassandre Guzman Feliz, also known as Junior. It's been a motion for me looking at that. I can no longer look at the horror on his face in those videos and those pictures. I just want to thank everyone that posted other pictures and other videos that showed his life and showed him in a better light. And hopefully, the press conference today will see even more funding for young people. Yes, when we see something, we should say something. Yes, those young people and others need to be held accountable, but we cannot talk about personal accountability without giving the resources for people to make better decisions. And so if we see something, we should say something, including the lack of educational opportunities, the lack of proper housing, and the lack of jobs, and fill those as well. Lastly, we are in danger now with the conservative court determining strip away basic rights. We've seen the Muslim man, we've seen Janice, the likelihood that candidates will try and will make even more. We have to be steadfast, whether it's LGBTQ rights, Roe v. Wade, segregation education, fair housing, independent- fair housing, independent redistricting, fair elections. There's a problem. There is consequences in elections. There is also consequences in how parties administer themselves and force people to feel some ways not to participate in those elections. And I hope everyone learns their lessons as we move forward in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Will be followed by Councilmember Holden, and finally, by Councilmember Levin.
Thank you, Majority Leader Combo. Today, I have two intros and six resolutions. I want to highlight a couple of them. I'm doing an intro to require 311 Service Center to respond accurately and honestly if the agency is unable to respond to a service request or complaint. Right now, many times, they don't get to it, and they leave you hanging, they don't say anything about what happened to your complaint. So now, they're compelled to say if they can't get to it, and I think that's an important measure. Also, I'm doing a resolution calling upon the New York City Department of Education to create more districts of gifted and talented programs and classes, and create a pathway for admissions to gifted and talented intermediate school programs. And also, a couple of local laws in relations to establishing a task force on vehicles registered out of state. It's a problem in many neighborhoods, and people are obviously getting around New York State insurance rates and registering their vehicles improperly out of state. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Levin.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader. First, I want to acknowledge four students who are this year's, part of this year's cohort of Hope Reichback Fellows. Hope Reichback was a staff member here at the City Council in my office, and for the last seven years, six years, we've been having fellowships that provide internships to Brooklyn-based nonprofits for college-age students here in New York City. So I want to welcome Aliza Khan, who is a Brooklyn College student, who's having a fellowship at the Brooklyn Defenders this summer, Jarrell Gray, who's a University of Rochester student, who has a fellowship at Bed-Stuy Restoration, Nashani Rodriguez, who's a SUNY Albany student, who has a fellowship at Brooklyn Community Services, and Razna Ekra, who is a Lafayette College student, who has a fellowship at Safe Horizons. I want to welcome them today. I also want to speak for a moment on the retirement announcement of Justice Anthony Kennedy, which is a stark reminder of the importance of elections and the impact that they have, not just on Congress and the presidency, but also on our nation's courts. This week, we have seen the power of the Supreme Court to roll back civil rights and civil liberties and advance the Trump administration's political agenda. The court's Trump versus Hawaii ruling upheld the president's ban on travel from several predominantly Muslim countries, allowing for broad discrimination against our Muslim neighbors and causing the separation of more immigrant families. As Justice Sotomayor rightly stated in her dissenting opinion, this decision is no better than the 1944 ruling that allowed for the internment of Japanese-Americans during World War II. With Justice Kennedy's retirement, these attacks will only get worse. Roe versus Wade and the, sorry, the Supreme Court also ruled this week to allow pregnancy centers, unlicensed facilities that often give the impression that they provide abortion care, the ability to lie to clients about the services that they do or do not provide, and shame, harass, or mislead women looking for comprehensive medical care. These will only get, these attacks on basic rights will only get worse. Roe v. Wade and the LGBTQ rights that have been upheld by Justice Kennedy's decisions are at risk. The stakes for human rights are too high. The American people deserve a voice in this matter, and so Congress must hold off on any confirmation vote until after the November election. History is watching. We cannot let excuses of civility allow us to be complacent or complicit, so I want everybody to call their U.S. Senators, 202-224-3121, and urge them to follow their own rules and not vote until next year in the new Congress. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Levin. Councilmember Williams for brief remarks.
Thank you so much. I forgot to announce the departure of Mike Toomey, my legislative director, so I just want to say thank him and welcome Mike Wright, who comes from HBD and President of MYD. Thank you.
Thank you, and I am honored to close out this meeting today with Speaker Corey Johnson. I want to thank you all for an incredible year. We have made tremendous strides budget-wise, legislative-wise. We've made a bit of history, but we've made a whole lot of herstory, and I'm very proud to share it. My parents are in the back today, who have come today to celebrate our final session and meeting. And I just want to encourage all the council members, yes, council members need a break, and they do need rest, so I do recommend that you all take some sort of break over these next couple of months. And I will now turn it over to Speaker Corey Johnson for closing remarks.
Everyone have a very nice Fourth of July. Be safe, spend time with your friends and family. Today's stated meeting of June 28th, 2018, is now adjourned.
Thank you.